So this will be recorded, but not put on TV until after everything is done. The board, panel has the questions.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening.
Mr. Bennett.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Wow. I appreciate everybody's flexibility.
I'm going to start the timer right now. Mr. Bennett, that's right.
So, you know, we have 15 minutes, so welcome. We appreciate you wanting to fill a vacant seat. It's awesome. So briefly, want to just tell the board a little bit about yourself?
All right, so I'm 30 or 46 years old. I've lived in McQuanigo for 14 years. I had a son that went through the district that graduated a couple of years back. He actually still is involved here locally. He runs Bible studies at both Parkview and at the high school on Tuesday, on Thursday and Fridays. He's gone into school to be a pastor. I'm self-employed, been self-employed for the better part of 20 years. Before that, my education is in pure and applied mathematics, and I've translated that to the business world. And from a community perspective, I've been involved with the Boy Scouts for about a decade. The last six years, I've been chairing Troop 152's committee. So I'm somewhat familiar with work with committees and boards. And in a professional sense, I've worked with teams. So I've kind of sat on the sidelines and watched some of my neighbors here who are on the school board and their involvement with the board. And I've been very impressed with the great changes that I've seen just in the term of a couple of years. And my wife, when this unfortunate event with veto happened, she encouraged me to throw my hat in the rain. And she said, "Well, you know, stop complaining about it and start making a difference." So that's why I'm here this evening.
Awesome, thank you. Great.
Mr. Bennett, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
Well, I can tell you what I read on Google, and it pretty much fulfilled my assumptions and how it would translate from a private company setting to a public setting in that the board operates to govern the district by offering policy, by setting goals, and then also by overseeing the work of the superintendent. And I know there's a lot more that goes on, the fiscal part of it all, and making sure that you're operating in line with the community, making sure that you're a voice for them. And that's pretty much the gist of it.
Thank you. What are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? Question mark. And what is the role of superintendent? Question mark.
Well, coming back to what I just said, they work in conjunction with each other. The school board hires the superintendent. So on one end, you've got the school board. They're setting these goals and looking at gaps that need to be filled. And then they are working with the superintendent and enabling him to be able to accomplish those goals. They're setting the policy, making sure that the superintendent is executing that throughout the district, and then overseeing all that work. And again, coming back to the community voice, making sure that all of that translates into their processes.
Thank you. When voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions? Question mark.
Well, when you're elected, you're elected as a representative for the community. So you want to make sure that their voice is heard. And then in addition to that, you want to make sure that you're in line with district policy, with state policy, legal policies, making sure that you're honoring the goals that you've set as a board, the policies that you've set as a board. And then you've obviously got to take into mind your own personal values, your integrity, and make sure that that is also heard.
All right. Okay, if you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what would be your five top goals as a board member?
I would want to seize on the momentum that I've seen in the last couple of years here. There's been a great turning of the ship in terms of conservative values being represented by the board. I would want to keep that train moving forward. I would love to see, and I don't know that it's necessarily, this is the place for it, but I would love to see Bible studies in all of the schools. I'm a born-again Christian, and my ultimate authority is to God. And so I would love to see Christian leadership represented here. I would also like to see politics stripped out of the schools. When my son was here, one of the issues that I had, the one time that I had to go to school leadership, was because ideology had trickled into the classroom. And one goal that I think would be great to see executed is just a political learning environment.
Anybody have any follow-up questions?
We've 11 minutes left.
I think it was a great interview. So we have 10 more interviews to go through on Thursday. And then after that, the board will sit down for five minutes, gather our notes, and we're going to go through our voting process. And then we'll take the top two candidates after we vote. And then the board will vote again on the top two candidates, and we'll notify the person that was selected by the board.
Sounds good. I appreciate your time. And if I have, it sounds like I still have a couple of minutes here. I just wanted to add, I know you're going to be interviewing a lot of people with a lot of different specialities that are going to bring a lot of value in different places to the table. But one thing that I think that's unique that I would bring to the table is youth, I'm 46, I'm not dead yet. And one luxury that I do have is I have time. You know, I've owned a couple of different companies, and it's given me the ability at a young age to have a great command of my time, and I can prioritize my schedule. So I know time is a commodity for many people, and I know that many of you wish that you could probably devote more time to dig into different subjects of interest that the board needs to dig into. And that's something that I could bring to the table that I don't think a lot of people could.
Great. Are you calling me a bird? Is he old?
Depends on who you ask.
All right. No more questions? Any questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Call this meeting to order Thursday, December 19th at 4:05 PM. This is our interview. This is our interview process for the vacant seat, the West seat.
Mike.
Here.
Jake.
Here.
Dale.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Carolyn. Here. Greg.
Here.
Crosby here.
Mr. President, would you like me to go to the first candidate?
Yes, please. Yes.
It is not live on YouTube right now. But it will be posted tomorrow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, and welcome. We're going to have about 15 minutes for this. I'm going to be asking you a few questions. Would you like to start out and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, have you speak in the, the only reason why is because that's the only way they can hear you on the recording. Is they can speak in the microphone. We can hear you close enough.
My name's Kristi Youngbluth. I have two children here in the district. I have a seventh grader named Lindy and a fifth grader named Ella. We have lived in Eagle for almost three years now. Prior to that, we were in Big Bend. I was a police officer for 14 years. And then I worked in insurance for a little over eight years. And then I owned my own business. I own a couple of Pop Murphy's franchise stores. And I retired October 8th of this year.
Thanks. Congrats.
Thank you.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Christine, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
I think you are a, sorry, collaborator. Collaborator with your other school board members as to what's best for the schools and the district as a whole. There's probably a lot of different ways that you can do that. A lot of community interaction, I assume. I haven't been on the board previously, so I don't know all of the details there. But I do know that there's a lot of community contact and collaboration with your peers, interactions with superintendent, and just at the school level with any concerns or problems or just day-to-day operations. Just ensuring that the vision and the best interest of the district as a whole is kind of adhered to, and everyone's moving in the same direction.
Thank you. What are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? What is the role of the superintendent?
Like, the major role would be picking the superintendent, holding the superintendent accountable to the district as a whole, and again, making sure that you guys are all on the same page and moving towards a common goal. Trying to find out if there are any deficiencies anywhere, best practices to fix them. Superintendent's role is the district, I guess, educational leader in charge of making sure that the district is, you know, seen in a positive light, and that you have people who want to send their kids to school here and know that they're getting a quality education.
Thank you. When voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
Mostly common sense. Common sense and morality. That's kind of how I like to lead my life is, is it moral? Is it ethical? It doesn't make sense. There's a lot of things that are distractions here in today's world, and a lot of chatter, just a lot of, a lot of ick, I'll say. But I think a lot of it can all boil down to, are you making decisions with the best interest of the people at hand? In this case, the students and the district? Does it make sense? Or are you making it convoluted? Are you doing things, extra steps, and muddying the waters if you don't need to, just to have something to do? Being a police officer for as long as I was, that was always kind of the guiding path, too, is you have to do what's right in the situations. And it's not always what's popular. And there isn't, you know, you don't always have a fan club. But in the end, at the end of the day, if you can say, you know what, I did what was right for this situation, that's how I like to live my life.
Where were you a police officer?
I was in Ohio for 10 years, in a community called Perrysburg. And then I was in Omni Falls for four years.
So you said you go by common sense, morality. Or we had it before, where we might have a different opinion of what that is. How would you handle that?
Everyone's entitled to their opinions, and everyone has certainly different opinions. I think that if you treat people with respect and know that you're all trying to get to a place together, there's different roads to get to the place. And you don't all have to be on the exact same page. You don't all have the same backgrounds, and you don't all have the same ideas. But as long as you're treating everyone with respect and listening, more listening, less talking, I think that's the way to really work with people.
So if you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
First goal is learn what I'm doing. Find out what this entails, you know, like any other job or position. I think you don't know everything going into it. You don't know much of anything going into this. I've been to some school board meetings, but that's kind of the extent of what I know. I've never been behind the scenes, you know? So I think kind of learning all of the details there, policies, getting to know all of you, just kind of the general flow of things. I would like to get more familiar with any issues that the district is facing right now. I'm very familiar with, you know, Rolling Hills. I'm there a lot, I'm on the PTO board there. But maybe getting into the other schools and kind of finding out what their pain points are. Talking to people in the community, finding out what they're looking for, long-term, short-term goals, long-term goals. There's a lot of complainers out there about the referendum. I would love to, I guess, kind of further information there and explain to people why we need, things we need, and why it's different now than it was back in the 70s and 80s. Sorry, I lost count. That's my list.
It's a nice list.
Okay.
What else would you like us to know that we haven't heard about yet?
I don't have any razzle-dazzle jokes or... I like to think that I'm a pretty level-headed individual. I want what's best for not only my kids, but for all the kids here in this district. And I think since COVID, I've taken a lot more active role in the schools and just being in the school to kind of see what's happening, see the interactions there, join the PTO, and just being around. And that's helped me kind of get a much broader view of what happens day-to-day in the schools. And I think that having more free time lately, I've really, I've kind of taken a shine to being more involved. And I know it benefits my kids, but I think that it would benefit lots of kids other than my own.
Any follow-up questions? I think we're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks for your service as a police officer, too. Tough job.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon. Actually, I guess it's close enough to hear me now.
Is your name, this one point above the mic, if you keep the mic closer to you, they won't have to remind you of holding up.
There have been very few times that anybody's ever had to tell me to be quiet around the mic.
Well, welcome, and thank you for applying. Each candidate is going to have 15 minutes. We're going to ask you a series of questions. And there might be some follow-up questions to those. I'm going to start off, just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I am a Wisconsin native. I've lived here in the McQuanigo area since September of 95.
Carol, can you talk into the microphone?
Sure, sure.
Because you're filming.
Yeah. I forget about the film.
No, that's okay.
So I've been a McQuanigo resident since fall of 1995. I live out on Eagle Springs Lake with my family. Some of you had had the opportunity to meet my eldest daughter, Madeline. She was a member of the school board representation from the high school. My youngest is a junior here in McQuanigo. Everything from soccer to represent McQuanigo on the Milwaukee Youth Symphony Orchestra. I've had the opportunity to participate and be involved in Eagleville Elementary Charter School, both as a vice president of the PTO, but also when my oldest, when Madeline, was in first grade, the initial five-year extension of the charter, helping work on the charter after that. And then even after both the girls were gone, helping with the charter board prior to COVID and the subsequent approval of that board's charter. So that's probably locally. I've worked, you know, I was taking a look at my resume recently and talking with members of my organization as we are part of an affiliate agreement. It's a nonprofit organization. And I've worked for three companies since 1995, excuse me, 1996, and taken on a lot of different roles and responsibilities. The key to that evolution within those organizations is, one, I'm not afraid to kind of work myself out of a job if it's better for the organization as a whole. And also, the hallmark of a lot of the work that I've done is around the idea of kind of multi-thread thinking. The idea that you can look at something very high, dive down deep, and then also bring people back up. I helped manage a group of software developers for nearly half a billion-dollar organization, a nonprofit in the Milwaukee area called Community Care. So I get the opportunity to work with a diverse group of individuals on some problems that hit home, both locally and throughout the state. And it is a huge pride point for me to be able to say that the work that my team does on a daily basis impacts a day in the life of frail elderly, developmentally disabled, and physically disabled adults. And I'd like to extend those opportunities to help even more locally by participating on the school board.
Thank you. Great. Carol, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
You know, you can definitely look at the Wisconsin School Board Association's guidelines about, you know, what is the role of the school board in a member. But for me personally, it really is about being curious, putting the student at the center, and being a critical listener. And what I mean by being a critical listener is somebody who comes to the table with a strong set of beliefs, but perhaps they're loosely held because you want to learn other perspectives and look at things through other lenses, so to speak. So I think that that is obviously key, coming to the table with an open mind. I think, obviously, you need to be invested in the entire district. You need to be invested in the entire student body, whether that be kids with exceptional needs, where it is clear that we have advantages in our district, to high school kids, the kids that want to go to college, and probably more importantly right now, the kids who aren't sure and what other paths that we have within the community to help them find a career in something that is truly interesting to them and that contributes back to both locally and on a state level. I would also say that lastly, I would say it is best to act in the best interest of the majority of the students, of all of the students, taking into account people's opinions and different perspectives. But again, it is about our community and what is important right now for the students. I think that that's the key role of the board. It kind of blends into the actual voting responsibilities, but I think that that's probably going to crush it.
Carol.
I'm sorry, my question.
What are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? What is the role of the superintendent?
So the school board is responsible for, you know, a myriad of things when you look at the spectrum of what goes on in a day or a day in the life of not only our students and our teachers. But to start with, it's about student achievement, right? It is clearly, we want the students to continue to achieve in the paths that they pursue because that is good for our community, it's good for them, it is the purpose of the school. I would say that second, it is to be an advocate for those students in their achievement and giving them the tools and the opportunities to grow and to evolve as from kids to young adults to contributing members of our community. The next piece that goes after that probably would be policymaking in that you need to establish policies to support achievement goals. You need policies that advocate in a responsible way for the students and the community. That's, I would say, that's the third. And then the last one, I would say, is budget, right? A budget that reflects your achievement goals. The things that you've set out to advocate for students hand those policies, because that's the final piece. It is the budget to support the decisions that are there. And so that's what I would say are the four main responsibilities for board members.
Thank you, Carol. When voting on issues... Hold on one second. How about the second part of the role of the superintendent?
So the role of the superintendent, first I have to let you know, I use a lot of analogies at times, much to the chagrin of both my daughters, my wife, many of my coworkers. But when I thought about the role of the superintendent, it is that it is similar to a role that I play within Community Care and our CIO plays. We have an executive team and a governance team. And we are there to get the work done, but we're also there to provide, we're not a voting member of our IS governance board. We recommend, we provide background, we provide perspective, and we're a guide. And I oftentimes see that the role of the superintendent is exactly that. And then when a decision is made, it is, okay, it's time to execute, right? It goes from the board to when it's time to execute. One of my favorite sayings is, God so loved the world he didn't send a committee. Well, the committee's made a decision. Now it's time to execute. And oftentimes, the superintendent is that vehicle by which to communicate and achieve the success of the goals that we talked about earlier, about achievement, advocacy, budget, and policy.
Thanks, Carol. When voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
So in my work, a lot of the things that I do is referred to as human-centered design. In the case of working within the school district, it's student-centered design. So how do you base those decisions? Well, you put the student at the center of a target, at the center of a diagram, because I do draw a lot of pictures for people. And from there, you make a decision based on what are the impacts and the goals of the board and the community as a whole. But again, still putting that student experience and those student needs at the center of the conversation. And there, it is truly the responsibility, I believe, of the board in order to come to a decision is to be open to being asked questions as well as asking questions and then using, as paraphrased by Mark Twain, and I think I said in my letter, you have two ears and one mouth, use them in that proportion. And you have to listen and work to understand, ask a question, and listen to the answer without kind of already thinking of your next response. That's how I would come to the decision. It is on a basis-by-case, solution or situation, whether it be budget or policy or student achievement, putting the student at the center, asking good questions, and be willing to look at things from a variety of lenses, right? One of the responsibilities of us as functioning adults and people who want to lead and contribute to our local community is to be aware of what's happening on a national level or a global level. But more importantly, how those things impact us on a local level and start looking through that local lens, and then stepping back and taking a bigger picture look. and then stepping back and taking a bigger picture look than stepping in. It's a process, it's not just a one-time sort of-- This is a reminder of stuff.
Okay. Great.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant left seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
First, to learn, right? I have not been in meetings, et cetera. So learning what the board's current objectives and direction are going. Anytime you step into a new position, step one is to listen and learn. The next goal would be to understand and better absorb some of the materials that are already available to the board in terms of perhaps a more in-depth perspective of the recent report card releases, et cetera. And I also, much to my detriment, I'm not familiar with what sort of three-year or five-year plan has been published by the board. That's part of the learning, but I would like to be involved in and understand what are the longer-term goals that the district has put in place. And then the last would be to be actively involved in understanding the progress and the true goals and opportunities associated within the middle school.
Do you want to say how many I left?
Three minutes.
So you mentioned community goals. Where would you relate that to? Where would you get community goals from?
So I don't know how frequently board members attend PTO meetings, but I think community goals start at the grade school level to understand what are the needs and perhaps the gaps that are out there in that to establish, kind of get some ideas of what's working and perhaps what's not, and what can be replicated or tried in different scenarios. So I'll use Eagleville as the example. I've always thought that Eagleville is a great opportunity to try something a little different in a smaller community but in a school that has such a high success rate. What can be replicated and spread elsewhere? Or what's going on at Prairie View that maybe isn't going on in Eagleville but is really a great success story? You know, maybe it's as small as how they publish student government. You know, how do you share that? I think to establish those community goals is to start at the elementary school, look for gaps, look for successes, and then talk about how you can recreate those successes at other locations, bringing people together.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions?
With the remaining time, is there anything else that you'd like to share with us that you haven't shared?
No, other than I was not able to make Monday night's board meeting. I was here for the previous Mondays when we didn't have a forum. My purpose for showing up on that evening was to say thank you when I saw the results of the report school card. School card, report cards for schools and the elementary schools was to say thank you on behalf of Eagleville alumni for the time and investment in Eagleville, to use it as one of those examples, those things that you can do and look to perhaps replicate elsewhere. I think it is a great differentiator for our school district and is something that everybody goes, really? You've got a charter school that's part of the district and it's working? You know, people really do acknowledge it, and I just would say thank you for the district's long-term support of it in my time in McQuanigo.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you wonderfully.
You too, thank you. And a Merry Christmas. Hi, Cherry.
Hello.
Hey.
How are you all?
Good, how are you?
I'm all right.
Good. So thank you for applying. I could ask all the candidates, and there are some new board members that may not know you. So we're going to have 15 minutes for every candidate. Why don't you tell us a little bit more about yourself?
That's not one of the questions.
No?
My name is Cherry Machelke. I have lived in the district for 40-plus years. I have four children that volunteer to schools here. I now have four grandchildren in the schools here with more company. I have always been in, well, not always, since my children were in school, I've been involved in the schools and find myself, usually find myself in leadership positions. I don't know why, it's just because I see a need and that's where I go. I served on the board for 12 years and pretty much enjoy every minute.
Thanks. Great. Cherry, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member? Should be easy one to do, share it, softball.
Okay, so when I was thinking about doing this and what I was going to do and how I was going to handle all this, I kind of went back through and read some of the things that we do, and I kind of thought it would be best to just go with what it says. So the school board exists for the purpose of providing the system of free public education for children in grades K-12. For the school board member, this means we have the responsibility to educate ourselves on what this means and how we, what we need to do it.
Number two, what are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? And what is the role, number two question, two A, two B, what is the role of superintendent?
All right, for that one, I had, the board has a dual responsibility. This is coming from our bylaws, so that's where this is coming from. I went and I actually just put it in here for-- The board has a dual responsibility for implementing statutory requirements pertaining to public education and for meeting the desires of the residents. The board is endowed with the authority to exercise their best judgment in determining policies, making decisions, and approving procedures for carrying out this responsibility. For a school board member, this means that they need to know or find out both the statutory requirements and the desires of the residents, and then educate themselves and use this information to the best of their ability, using their best judgment, to make decisions and approve procedures in the role that they are responsible for.
And then the--
That means--
Yeah.
Oh, the second--
The part B, yeah, thank you, Cherry.
The second, okay. The second half was what were the responsibilities of the superintendent?
Correct.
I didn't do that one so well on my just reading it off. So I believe the role of the superintendent is to-- I didn't write this. I have to figure this out or I have to remember it at least. Is it, I'm going to just, is to-- Just give me a second, will you please?
You have 10 minutes.
I have 10 minutes? Oh, it's not going to take me that long. I'm just like, why isn't it here on my paper? Okay, I know what I want to say. I think the role of superintendent is to facilitate what-- He is the man who should know what the statutory things are so that he can bring them to the board and teach us what to do with it. I believe he is to be a major supporter of the district, that he should be a good communicator and be willing to work with-- In his job description, it's about working with the staff, the community, and the students for the best outcome possible. I believe he needs to be trustworthy and have great integrity and to be a good role model for everyone that he is responsible for.
Thank you, Cherry.
I have a follow-up question. You had mentioned that for the role of the school board member, knowing that school board members will find out desires of the residents, how would a school board member find out the desires of residents?
In my experience, the best way is to be in, is to be out in the community because it's, I was, here's an example. I was at a party last night, and doesn't matter. Anyways, and we were talking about taxes and about how, what was happening with the taxes. And the one lady there says, well, this isn't the bad year. Next year's going to be the bad year because that school referendum's going to kick in. And I was able to say, that's not true. And that it isn't going to be the case and that the other referendum will be sunsetted before the new one comes in. And so I was able to do that in the community, just at a place like that. And so that's one way that you can find out what the community wants. I know that I have grandkids, and so I'm involved in some of the, in school activities. And so when you're with groups of people, they talk about things and they kind of share what they think is going on and what they feel should be going on. And I think that's probably the number one way you can find out what people want. And I also understand that each of us has our own circles of people that we associate with, and it's hard to cross those boundaries. But getting into the schools and into places where there are people from all the different circles is a good place to find out.
Thanks, Cherry. Number three, when voting on issues or policy as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
I, one of the main, let's see. The school board, the school board believes that our district's youth are its greatest asset and their education is the community's greatest single responsibility. To do that, to that end, the district staff consistently strives to serve the best interests of the students and the community. So how I would-- All right. I did this whole thing and now I figured out what I did. All right, so I, for the answer to your third question is when voting on issues of the school board or on what, what I base my decisions, it would be the knowledge and information that I had learned prior to voting. And I know from sitting on the board, many times it's from the administration. So you get, collect the information you have. You collect information from what other districts are doing in the area. You collect the information of what's going on in the community. And then the knowledge and information I learned prior to voting, the information gleaned from conversations and information provided by administrators, which I just said. And after that, I would just use the best, I use the information and then vote how I felt that it should be. I know many times I've sat at this board table and I came in thinking I was going to vote one way and after getting the information that was going on with it, I was able to, I changed my mind. I thought, oh, now that I know this and I know this to be true, I don't believe that to be true anymore. And just so you know, I found my information on the superintendent's. And here it is, because I did a really cool thing. Okay, the major roles of the responsible, of a school board member is to be responsible and available to the public, be informed, be involved, be open to the learning, what the community wants and needs. The role of the superintendent is to be accountable to the board, to staff, and to the community, to be open and listening to the community's needs, to be responsible and available and respectful to the public, and be responsible and available and respectful to the staff. All I had to do was look a little harder. There you go. If I didn't say those things, I didn't know. Okay, that's it, now I'm on my own.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant left seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a school board member?
All right. You may have to repeat the question, but I will tell you what I think you're asking. And so this is, why am I doing this? I'm doing this because I feel that someone, I had ran into someone at a place in McQuanigo who had said, why don't you put your name in because we need someone with experience? So for this particular situation, it's a short-term thing. So is there, like, your question seems like really long-term. My goals for this would be to fill a spot of someone who I respected and respected me, who many times had the same opinions as myself, and be able to step in without a learning curve because having done it for 12 years, it would not be. So I guess, I don't know, there's five goals. One is, I just, if you'd like, I would like to help get through this little piece of time. And I know some of the background, I know some of the things that have to happen in the next couple of months. And I just thought it might be a place that I could be useful, used from the previous experience that I had. Does that answer your question, or would you like me to come up with four more?
No, I think that's--
Any follow-up questions? All right, well, thank you.
Do you have anything that you wanted to share with our audience?
Well, okay, this is, this is a really hard place you found yourself in. And I look across here, and other than Mr. Berks, many of you, this is, you're coming up for your, just your second couple of years. And it takes a long time to learn what your role is and to do it. And then when you throw in curves like have been thrown in with lawsuits and people not being here anymore and things like that, it makes your job really hard. So, and so I'd like to say that no matter what your choices are, you have plenty of good candidates on this list of 11 people that put their name in. So again, I was just looking to be a stopgap for something so that you could figure it out. And I also would like you to keep in mind that now that the referendum passed, I was-- I was at McDonald's today in Wales. There was, there was a lady who was really upset at the referendum. I don't know which whose referendum they were talking about, I don't know. But about how they shouldn't have been able to go for it again. So the people gave you their votes to do this. And so I just ask you to do what you say, be transparent, and do it to the best of your ability. I guess that's what, I guess if I had to say anything, that's what I'd like to say to all of you. I guess that's it.
Thank you.
I'm sure it was something better, but I, that's what came out, so.
Thank you, Cherry.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, good luck, make it enjoy.
Hi there.
Okay.
Somebody picks up your voice.
Very good.
Take a side, yeah, get yourself settled.
Yes.
Right.
Hi, everybody.
Hello and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Hacker.
Thank you for your interest and for applying.
Welcome. It's a live--
Make sure that's, yes, very close to you so it can be picked up over--
Great.
So we'll have 15 minutes, ask you a series of questions. Can you start off by tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, first of all, my name's Rich Hacker. Good to see all of you this evening. Lived in McQuanigo since 1986. All of my children went to and graduated from McQuanigo up to the high school stage. Three grandchildren right now in the district at Big Bend, they're all at Big Bend. And just really have become part of the community out here. Love living out here and I try to give back to the community when I can.
I recall you were here talking about mission statement once.
Yes, exactly. And increasing that curve to turn it around and go in the other direction. That's the only time I've ever been here in all of my years, living out here.
I liked it, that was great.
Okay, good.
Great. Mr. Hacker, number one, what do you think of the, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
Well, implement the policies of the district, number one, and then listen to the parents and people connected to the school and see how we can best serve our kids.
Number two, what are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? And two B, what is the role of the superintendent?
School board members, I think, in the meetings should spend more time listening, less time talking, and from there, take their background and make, you know, their best judgment decision. It may not necessarily be the decision that people want to hear, but if it's their best judgment, I mean, that's why people are elected to representative positions, not just to listen to folks, but to actually, you know, vote according to their own heart. And as far as the job of the superintendent, I guess also to implement the wishes and the votes of the board.
Number three, when voting on issues or policy as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
Well, I, like any decision I've made in my life, I like to get as much information on the subject as I can to begin with and then bring you my experiences, which have been, you know, quite varied, bring that to the decision, and then vote accordingly.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant left seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
Now, first of all, hopefully implement-- Now, first of all, hopefully implement along the guidelines of Vito, who I'm going to be replacing. I know he was a little more conservative than most, and that would be sort of my, you know, wishes as well, to implement that. Again, listen to the people that come before us, see what they have to say. I don't know how many people actually come before you on various meetings. If you get a lot of people that come in here and express their, you know, wishes or express their desires on various subjects, I don't know. Like I said, I've only been to one meeting, and there's only one other person here when I was here. So, if I... Judging from other meetings, I'm sure not many people show up. But still, somehow, figure out, you know, what the people of this community want for their children and from their school, and vote accordingly.
You mentioned figuring out what the people want. How would you go about figuring out what the people want?
Well, I circulate in this community. I talk to a lot of folks. If I was a board member, I would talk to them about other subjects than what I normally talk to them about now, and keep my ear to the ground a little bit more than I do now on specifically school subjects, because right now, I, you know, you hear things about the school, but I'm really not all involved, you know, as you are. And I have no say in, you know, which way the direction goes. But if I was on the board, then I would be cognizant, a little bit more cognizant of opinions that I hear out there and bring those to the board as well.
Any follow-up questions?
You've got some remaining time. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with us?
Well, I run a business in this community for... We built our factory out here in '96, and I am no longer part of that business, but I still keep my ear to the ground, you know, with the business. And I am still involved with the Chamber of Congress, even though I'm not on the board there anymore. I'm not president anymore. I was president for a while, but I keep, you know, close contact with April, especially when I get a haircut, because I go to Dunes, and I walk right past, and if she's open, I stop in and say hi. And I've learned... I've learned how to make decisions. I think that's one of the downfalls of a lot of organizations, is that they just can't seem sometimes to make a decision and stick with it and move forward. I mean, everybody makes decisions. I made lots of decisions in my business. I like to think the bad ones were a minimum, but they do get made. But, you know, you make a decision, you run with it, you forge ahead, and sooner or later, you figure out whether it's right or not. If it's not right, you know, reevaluate. But if you deep down think it's the right decision that you made, you go with it, you know, and keep forging ahead, even when you get some obstacles thrown in front of you. So, I guess I would leave that with the rest of you, that when it comes to organizations and people, sooner or later, somebody has to run with something and take the responsibility for it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Well, you're welcome.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks a lot. Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Emily, welcome, and thank you for your interest in applying for the open seat. Emily, can you talk really into the microphone so people watching on camera could hear you? Thank you.
Yep.
So, you'll have 15 minutes. We're gonna ask you a series of questions. And if you could just start out, tell us a little bit about yourself, that'd be great.
Sure. My name's Emily Leywine. I live here in McJuánago. I've got three kids. They're 12, four, and two. I currently juggle being home with them and then also helping with my husband's business. Yeah. I play volleyball for fun.
Do you play at...
The Legion?
The Legion.
No, I play at the Ale House in the summer, and then Kelly's Bleacher is indoor sand in the winter.
Okay. She's serious. Dale not like you. A little fat to play seriously, all right?
It's a good way to get out of the house.
Did you play in college?
No.
High school?
Um, high school, not college.
Where'd you go to high school?
Okanagan.
Oh, Cooney. All right. Could we say that? Raccoon? Is it raccoon?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Question number one, Emily, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
To make policies and implement them in the school district.
Number two is, what are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? Two B is, what is the role of the superintendent?
So, the... My understanding is the board members kind of, you know, make the policies, oversee curriculum and potentially budgets, and then the superintendent's role to implement and oversee those on a day-to-day basis.
When voting on issues or policy as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
I would base my decision on what's best for the large group, not necessarily the one or two or handful, but what's best for everybody.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
Well, after this past week of events, I would potentially want to look into like AI security systems for the high school. I know KM just purchased one. I don't know if it implemented it yet, but it's supposed to be able to identify weapons in a backpack, and it ties into the security system, so no need for metal detectors. That would be pretty big on my list as far as potentially looking into that and seeing what the board could do for the school. Take a look at, you know, what the curriculum is for the district and see if there's anywhere that we can improve it.
Can you hold on one second?
Yep.
Is that a candidate? Zach?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Take a look at the curriculum and see if it can be improved. I'm really excited about the new middle school. I have a sixth grader, so it will unfortunately not be ready by the time she hits middle school, but my younger boys would be going there, so taking a look at that and seeing how we can kind of make it the best middle school that we can with the given budget. I mean, it's not three.
Security curriculum, sixth grade. You don't have to have five if you don't have five, but just...
That's all I have, I guess.
Yes, I'm sure time. Is there anything else that you haven't told us that you would like to share?
No, not that I can think of. I'm just happy to be here and happy to have the opportunity to come in front of you guys and take a stab at one of the open positions.
So, what business does your husband own?
He owns a construction business.
Okay. Awesome. And how is business?
He's really busy.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Have a great holiday with the family.
Thank you. You guys, too.
Your husband did my basement.
I know. He's so high.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yes, it is.
Welcome.
I did.
Thank you for applying for their open position. Please move that as close as you can to you so you can speak to the mic. We are recording.
Okay.
You'll have 15 minutes. We'll ask you a series of questions, and can you start off, tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay. I don't know if you've read the profile I sent over. My name is Bob Woods. I've been here for... I've lived in this same house in McJuánago for 25 years from the East Coast. Raised three kids through this system. Got one that teaches in the system. Recently retired, so got some time and looking for an opportunity to do some good.
Great. Question number one, Mr. Woods, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
Yeah. It's a good question, I guess. I read it, and in my mind, I kind of have an idea. So, then I went on a web and looked and said, yeah, okay, what's school boards do? What does superintendent do? It seemed very black and white to me, and I hope it's not black and white. I see more of the board being more the legislative arm and maybe checks and balances, but really supporting the superintendent in the school system. I would think that the board is also... You're the customer, right? The customer being parents, kids, teachers.
Number two, Bob, what are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? And two B, what is the role of the superintendent?
So, what's the difference between the first part of that question and the first question?
We've been getting different answers for that, so we would like to ask.
Well, I'll just move to the superintendent part then. So, the superintendent, I think, really is... The guy that's ushering... Ushering the process through the system, right? He's picking the... Hoping to pick the curriculum. He's putting the... I would think he's putting the processes in place that are approved here in this room. But he's the CEO, right? He's the CEO of the school system. And I would think this is like any other board, right, of a corporation, just to leave the monitoring, making sure that things get done the right way, so that the parents and kids prosper.
Thank you. Number three, when voting on issues or policy as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
So, I guess the first would be law, legislation, and policy, right? But I think I would probably go with my heart, and again, I think I'd like to be more hands-on as far as ears of the customer, hearing what teachers have to say, hearing what kids have to say, hearing what parents have to say, and using that as guidance along with my own experience. In my experience, right, this is quite simple, right? I raised three kids, put them through this system successfully. They were participants at all levels, right? From Lego robotics to sports to musicals to dance, to academics, to marketing programs that brought them to Florida to compete on marketing programs. They were successful in college, you know, to no help from me, right? They were smarter than I am. But quite frankly, one of them actually leaned on the prior superintendent, had discussions on some programs she was running in Eau Claire. And smart on her part, because he ended up chasing her and recruiting her for this system. But that's my legacy is my kids, and that's part of my success, and I lean on that.
Bob, you said you're retired?
I am retired.
What did you do before you retired?
So, I worked for 30, 40 years for a company called W.R. Grace. I started in research, and then I sold chemicals to pharmaceutical, paint companies, glass companies, glasses companies. The chemicals I sold are quite diverse, right? You can sell them into just about any market. After 30, 40 years, I retired and went to work for one of my customers, a distributor called Nexo Chemicals, who was quickly bought up by another bigger distributor called Univar, who was then bought up by a PE company. And PE companies run very different than companies that have long-range plans, and my style of management didn't quite fit there.
Thank you.
I got a lot of money.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
That's a really good question. You know, you caught me on this one. So, five goals that I would have as a board member. So, I guess the first one would be to kind of fit in, right? First, understand what the lay of the land is. I would sort of look at things, and, you know, as a member, right? You've got Dale Porter, who's the president. I'm sure he's guiding the guys, right, and setting the priorities. But, you know, I think you... I don't know if you guys are familiar with systems like Six Sigma or anything, but prioritizing things, looking at where the biggest hits are as far as helping the kids, teachers, the parents move along. So, helping prioritize. Number three would be... The three would be, as I said before, I think I'd want to be part of... More hands-on, right? So, you know, you guys all look fairly young and probably have jobs during the day. I don't. Maybe I can use that sometime to actually reach out and be here with the customer. I don't know what the system, what the process is to talk to a teacher or to talk to a kid or to talk to a parent or to during the daytime. That's three.
That's that two. You have three. Not everybody hits high. That's totally fine.
Thanks.
So, you get to prioritize goals. What would some of the goals be for you?
So, that, I don't know, right? So, I'd have to see... I'd have to understand what the goals are that you guys are working on, right? What are the activities? And quite frankly, I can be honest, I haven't really followed you guys every meeting. It's been hit and miss, and since I've been retired, it's been kind of a different world, so it's been more miss than hit. But I'd have to sort of meld that in with, you know, what you guys are doing.
Any other questions?
You have some extra time. Is there anything else that you want to share with us that you haven't shared yet?
No, I can't think of it. I can't think of any.
Well, congratulations on your retirement.
Ah.
And happy holidays, merry Christmas, all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. Cool.
When you get comfortable in the chair, please pull the mic close to your body, just so that everything can be picked up that you say.
Good evening. Welcome, and thank you for applying for the open position. So, this will be 15 minutes. You'll be asked a series of questions, and I want you to start out by telling us a little bit about yourself. Pull that microphone real close, please. Is it Rick? You said Rick?
Yeah, Rick. Given name's Eric, but everybody knows me as Rick. Married, got two kids that graduated from McJuánago High School. Got a grandson that's graduating this year, or the end of this year. We've been out here about 23 years. I am a former school teacher way back. Some of you are probably young enough that you'd have missed me if I was teaching. I taught middle school in Greendale, math and science. Did that for six years. Interestingly enough, they kept laying something... I don't know if you guys remember or not, as enrollment would drop and you would have to...
as enrollment would drop and you would have to staff. Somebody would get laid off each year. Taught six years, hired in on a bubble. Started getting laid off on a Monday and called back on a Wednesday. You know, the same Wednesday in that week. By my sixth year, it was August. And they still hadn't called me back, so figured I needed to find a steadier job. So I had started to work on a master's degree in computer science. Hired on with Quad Graphics. Moved to Wisconsin Bell and then was with A.T.N.T. As an IT executive for thirty-four years. Most of my really good friends are the people I taught with. So it was kind of sad to leave that, but wanted to start a family and had to have, had to have a steadier income. Um, let's see, what else? I come with no agenda. When I, when I, when I saw the opening, I thought, three months, you could do that. You know, you, you can be useful. Don't plan on running for the position. Just really want to help out in a bad situation, all right? Bringing nothing to the table other than my experience and my profound respect for public education. I think the yellow school bus is, should be the, on the flag of democracies everywhere. So just really want to do my part. If, I didn't know how many folks you were going to get applying for this. You've got my neighbor down the street who just moved in. Now, you talked to Emily. And Emily's all right. She's, she, nobody messes with Emily. Should we have a difficult neighbor situation that nobody told her about when they moved in? She has pretty much shut that down. So what I can do is, I, I took some notes because I'll ramble. Otherwise, how do you, do you want to know anything else about me? I'm retired now, so.
Why don't I ask you some questions?
Sure.
Rick, make sure you talk to the microphone. Your voice doesn't carry well.
Okay. It helped when I was teaching.
Number one, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
Okay. Show up prepared for all the board and committee meetings. Understand what it takes to deliver a quality education. Understand and represent the needs of their constituents. Understand all external factors related to providing a quality education. Communicate clearly and effectively and respectfully. Listen and give objective consideration to all points of view. Make fact-based decisions. Be an independent thinker. And really understand and care about the importance of public education.
Thank you.
I anticipate your second question.
I'm sure you do.
Nice lady out front sending some sheet sheets.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, very good thing.
Number two, what are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? And two B, what is the role of the superintendent?
Hey, I brought that into school board and superintendent. I was assuming that's what we were looking for here. Roles and responsibilities of the board, as I see them, are governance and decision-making, strategic direction-setting, financial performance, accountability, policymaking, conflict resolution. But all of these things in concert with the superintendent. Just as a side note, one of the things that I was most impressed with when we moved out here twenty-three years ago was the fiscal responsibility of the school board out here. Get a really good bang for the buck out here compared to some other places. The superintendent then really is the CEO responsible for day-to-day leadership of the district. Long-term and trying, I mean, basically the direction of the board. Working with the board does the nuts and bolts grunt work and implementation of what the board lays down. See it as a two-way street. I, when I was, when I was in a leadership position, what made me really successful was trusting the experts in the area and basically providing guidance and airco, we used to call it air cover, air cover for the people that really knew what they were doing. And it just helped them, you know, think this stuff through. Not that you guys don't know what you're doing, but anybody have an education, degree or background?
Yes.
Super. All right. So the long-term and short-term, strategic planning, culture development in the school district. The nuts and bolts of financial management. Now, business speak is resource acquisition and development. That's hiring and developing staff. Communication, and again, all of these things in concert with and at the direction of the board.
Mr. President, we have five minutes left in this.
Okay, thank you. Rick, when voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
Combination of things. First of all, what will provide for the best educational outcome for the students? Open discussions with as many stakeholders as possible. What is financially sound and delivers the best bang for the buck? What the constituents want? What the law requires? And then my vast personal experience from going on seven decades.
If you were the candidate that is selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a school board member?
Get to every meeting. Research as much as possible so that I would be useful at the meetings. Listen. Listen to the experts that are, you know, that have been doing the job to help move us forward. Again, like I said, no agenda on my part. So the other goal would be to just fit in and keep things moving smoothly without causing a whole lot of disruption. How far did I get? Three?
Four.
Four. The other goal, I guess, would be a personal goal, which would be to decide if, if doing something like this in the long-term would be something I want to do.
Any other follow-up questions?
One minute, three minutes? Is there anything else that you haven't shared that you want to share with us?
Don't really think so. I did do some volunteer coaching with the girls' softball team when my youngest daughter was, well, no, it was after she was done playing. Oh, I do want to put a plug in for who I think is the goddess of education in this district is Sue Bakoven. When we moved out here, my eldest daughter, who was sixteen at the time, that I didn't think was going to make it to seventeen, and I was sure wasn't going to graduate. She was in special ed. Sue got ahold of her. She graduated a semester early. And now she is a, now she's a lead social worker for the county, for Waukesha County, doing A.D.R.C. work. So shout out to Sue Bakoven.
Awesome.
The last thing I want to tell.
Yeah, great story.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Have a great, great, a great family, great family holiday and Christmas. Thank you.
We welcome, we, we usually do.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hey, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, welcome.
Hi.
Thank you for applying for the position.
Of course, thank you for your time.
You are welcome. You'll have fifteen minutes. We're going to ask you a series of questions. And you can just start off by tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure, so my name is Joe Carmichael. I've lived in the area for about fifteen years now. I've got four school-aged children. Two are currently students in the district. Two are yet too young to be students in the district, but will be. And I want to lead with a disclosure that I work for a company that likely bid on work for the new school. And so if I can't sit in the temporary position, we can guide this conversation in a whole different direction.
You can, you'll just have to recuse, recuse yourself when we're voting on it.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else you want to say about yourself?
Open forum there then?
Yes, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure, so we went through the kids, but for me, I work for an HVAC manufacturer representation firm. I'm a partner at that company. So I do manage quite a few people. I interact with everything from school districts to factory owners, mostly mechanical contractors. Educational background is in decision science. So I'm really versed in statistical analysis and trying to make and help people make decisions that are optimal for themselves. Discovering conflicts of interest or unintended consequences and interacting with different parties who have different interests in a situation.
I apologize.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
That's kind of stealing the moral of the act there. Sorry. There's some tools that something came up there. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. So my interest in being a part of the school board is being able to apply that objective decision-making and almost forensic interest in issues to help craft and guide policy. Thank you.
Joe, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
School board member should be focused on working with the other school board members to create policy that enables the administration, the superintendent, the teachers to teach and reach the children while protecting the interests of the district, which can be varied interests, whether it's legislative or a public perception.
Joe, what are the major roles and responsibilities of a school board member? And two B, what is the role of the superintendent?
So the roles and responsibilities of the school board member are to maintain rigorous attendance at school board meetings, to be an expert in the topics being discussed, to be open and available to meet with the administration, understand the administration's needs and the district's needs as well as the community's needs so that policy can meet all of those interests.
And then what is the role of superintendent, Joe?
The superintendent is essentially the chief executive or the lead administrator for the school district. I believe they manage most of the day-to-day operations and implement the policy that the school board crafts. And as technology has created an opportunity where the community can more directly interact with the administration and almost expects it, I would say that the superintendent has become something of the celebrity administrator or the voice of the district, for better or worse.
Not ours, but I understand what you're saying. Joe, number three, when voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
I think that depends a lot on what is at hand. But generally speaking, I would look for, does the decision be considered solve the problem that it's trying to? We're going to fix something that's broken or fix something that's not broken or break something unintentionally? How is it going to be perceived by the public, by the students? How's it going to impact the students? Is it going to be cost-effective? Is it, is it important that it's cost-effective? There's a lot of different factors that can play into whether this is an important decision and how it should be made.
So you get answered, like you're worried about like what the public is going to perceive. How would you, how would you kind of guess or get to that point where you know what the public wants and how they're going to perceive something?
Public can be hard to predict, so I don't know that it's necessarily possible to always know what the public is going to perceive. But there's also nothing really new in the world and so you can frequently look to what other districts have done locally for maximum relevance elsewhere in the country. It's easy to go back in time and see that a lot of these issues have been recycled and recycled. And I say these issues, I mean anything that's coming up in front of the board. But I, I do think perception and how ideas are presented can be important in how they're received.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
Because it's only a three-month appointment, I think having too large of goals or lofty goals probably aren't realistic. I would think in that amount of time, the idea would be to understand what's happening at the district level and with the board and to help make sure that things run relatively smoothly in that period. But it's hard to onboard someone in such a short period of time. And I don't think that I would have any intention of running for the permanent board position next year.
Why not, Joe?
Because even though you guys or the state would say it's okay if I recuse myself from discussions regarding the new building, from my side of the business, perception's very important and it would create an opportunity for my competitors to say that this isn't a fair process, which would be a problem both for the district and. a fair process, which would be a problem both for the district and professionally.
Want to quick follow-on. So even though you're not going for a full-term, if you were, and I only ask if you have any goals that maybe we haven't heard before and we can use them going forward, I guess, if you can think of them. If you can't, that's fine, too.
Sure, I mean, it's good to have goals. I think, I just want to see, one of my goals would be to keep the district out of headlines.
Out of?
Out of, out of the headlines. I think a district that is operating super smoothly really doesn't make a whole lot of waves, with there's no distractions to learning. I'm not saying it's possible, but I think that's a valiant goal. The second goal would be to pursue initiatives that increase enrollment, which is both a community issue and a district issue. But generally, communities that are growing are going to see more resources available to the education system, and that tends to support itself. And it's a good sign of success. If people want to move to your community, that's a good sign.
Destination district?
Yeah, exactly. I think you want to be a destination district. If you're making headlines, that's why you want it, because you're going to state, or because your kids are leading in ACT scores, tangible things.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your time.
Certainly. Good evening.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
Just a glut for punishment after Monday night.
It was a long one.
I know, but I figured if I was going to take a bite, I might as well see what it tastes like.
Well, welcome, and we appreciate you signing up and try to fill this vacancy.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for your service, by the way. Yes.
No issue. Yeah, you bet.
So you'll have fifteen minutes. We'll ask you a series of questions, and if you'd like to start out, tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Aaron Hackett. I grew up in central Wisconsin, actually, after college, went into the Army.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, they're filming.
You're right, I apologize.
That's right.
He even briefed me, you know. Went into the Army, after I got out of the Army, my wife got a job in the Milwaukee area, so we moved to the Mawano area about fifteen years ago. I'm a police officer with the village of East Troy. My son is Soren, he's in seventh grade at Prairie View, or Parkview. Just got back from a wrestling meet. And then my daughter Evelyn is at Eagleville. She's my artsy fartsy, so she likes orchestra and drama. Soren's my walkie co-pay. He's football and wrestling.
Awesome.
Great.
Aaron, number one, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
Sure, I think one of the biggest things, I think, is that bridge between, you know, the citizens who live within the district and then the district itself. And I think it kind of goes both ways. I think, I think we're there to advocate for, for the students and the staff, but we're also there to advocate, you know, for the community with their concerns as well. So I think it kind of goes back and forth. Hire and evaluate the district administrator, review policies, and procedures. The last meeting, you guys went through that audit, so it looks like you guys are kind of ingrained in the budget, ensuring that you understand that. I guess guiding, you know, taking guidance from the professionals that are being paid in the district, and then also giving guidance back, so kind of that two-way bridge.
Thanks, Aaron. Number two, this is a two-part question. What are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? And two B, what is the role of the superintendent?
Okay. So I guess the roles of the school board is the macro, the large-scale stuff, taking a look at, you know, big-picture decisions, things like that, and kind of guiding things on what they think the community would want. I think that the superintendent, I guess, you know, I was the S R O for East Troy for eight years. You know, I kind of saw the superintendent as like the CEO of the district, the day-to-day operations, hiring and managing building-level administrators, you know, people, service directors, directors of different departments. But the day-to-day meat and potatoes operations of the district would fall on him to make sure, or whatever it is, to make sure that, you know, everything's, you know, whatever resources via budget are being used responsibly, and, you know, things within legality, that kind of stuff, policies and procedures for the staff.
Number three, Aaron, when voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
Starting out, you know, I guess that's how I survived in the Army and the police world, is at first I kind of shut my mouth and opened my ears. I like to absorb information as much as I can. It's kind of my job now. Again, we, you know, we pay professionals to give us advice from the district. Happily take that and absorb that, and then use it to make the best, most reasonable decision for the students within the bounds of what the taxpayers had the ability to provide.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a board member?
You know, I've always, I guess I've always had that pull to want, I've always wanted to be more involved in my kids' education, so I guess, I mean, goal number one, I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to like policies, so I guess I would absorb all of that and try to, it just, at first, I would just try to get my feet wet, just try to understand everything that's going on. To be honest with you, I, we're really happy here. We love this district. We're having a great time. The last meeting I went to, I didn't see any, you know, stress on your guys' face when it came to the, to the budget. I kind of, before I, before I start making things change, I like to, I like to understand what's going on first. I just, I just see, I've been in service my whole life, and this opportunity came along, and I guess my goal is just to serve where I can be, you know, where it's needed, I guess. And I don't have any like doctrine or policies or procedures that are in my brain that are like, step one, I would chase this. You know, I don't have that yet, you know. But I'm ready to learn, you know. Sorry.
That's wonderful. Not everybody's come out with five, you see.
Oh, okay. I came up with negative one.
No need to.
Ursi's been on the board twenty-four years, he's still learning.
That's good, yeah.
Any questions? We have a little bit more time. Is there anything else that we should know about you or anything else you want to share?
Yeah, sure. You know, I think, one of the things that kind of inspired me, the time I was at East Troy School District, the eight years, the S R O, that really kind of, it really instilled, I enjoy working, I really enjoyed working with the schools. It's such a small police department that usually you're working by yourself, but it was nice having all those coworkers. It was nice getting to know all the kids. It was, it was stressful getting to know most of the parents, or not most of them, some of them, but I just, it was just, I had a blast. And, you know, I really, I really dove in and kind of became the subject vendor expert. We installed the S R P as well for our district, the standard response protocol, you know, so I had fun training all the staff on that and kind of diving into the building, safety plans every year with each individual building administrator. I kind of miss it. I needed a break, but I kind of miss it, but it's another reason why I kind of wanted to dive in. Kind of, not that I would know how Mawano works, but I do have a working knowledge kind of of how districts kind of function as a unit.
Do you have any other follow-up questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening and welcome. We appreciate you and your time. Appreciate you trying to fill out our open board seats. We're going to have fifteen minutes with various questions, and we'd like to, you can start off by telling us a little bit about yourself.
Well, um, oh, sorry.
No, no, talk loud because they're filming. It's great.
I'm Peter Shekellis. I got four daughters in the district, two in elementary, one in the middle school, one in the high school. I have a niece and a nephew also in the district, so my wife went to this district, her brothers went here, so a little bit of history. So me, I'm an accountant by trade, so I'm a controller for an excavating and grating company. So very interested in the financial impact on education in the state, especially challenges with special needs and how it's funded, how that impacts districts, seems to be disproportionate. So those are some things that I find interesting. Thank you.
Great. Sure. Is it Pete or Peter?
Whatever people naturally say, I let them go with, because some people, if you say, hey, you say Peter, they sound funny. Some people, if you say Pete, they sound funny, so whatever naturally comes out of someone's mouth, I'm fine with.
I'm not going to go Mr. Last Name because that would mess me up, but I'll go Pete, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Pete, what do you think the role and responsibility is of a school board member?
It's oversight, primarily in setting the vision and the tone for how the district should function. So they're not educators, they're very much an oversight role, and they're not, you have to take a step back. You can't get into the weeds, that's not, you know, like me as an accountant, I'm not telling a teacher what to do or a principal what to do. We're setting a vision that should be representative of the community.
Number two, two is a, it's an A and a B question. Pete?
Sure.
Two A, what are the major roles and responsibilities of school board members? And two B is, what is the role of the superintendent?
So school members, there's different, I assume, different communities focused on different areas of oversight, to look into items, engage the community, engage the staff, teachers, the administration, so to, as part of the oversight role, you have to, you have to have engagement at different levels to see how things are functioning. So that's, again, the responsibility. Superintendent is the CEO of the school district. So his, his role, is he or she, but in this case it's Joe, so, his role is to take that vision and that tone set by the school district and turn it into action plans and tangible results. So he's, we're setting guidelines as a board, hey, this is kind of the direction. He's taking those guidelines and then he's taking, he's creating plans, or having his team create plans, and then they're executing those plans, and then, you know, he's responsible for the ultimate results and metrics.
Thanks, Pete. Number three, when voting on issues or policies as a board member, on what would you base your decisions?
So I would base my decisions on what I felt was best for the community as a whole, what I discern is the best decision for your overall community. Sorry, pulled away. So it shouldn't be based on, me, I would base it on not just the single issue that's being voted, but rather how that fits in to the past and the future. So there's, there's going to be situations that come up where the individual topic might pull someone one way or the other, but you have to step back and say, okay, how does this impact the community in the large? How does it fit into the vision? How does it fit into what's best for the community? And if, if we're doing things well, what's best for the administration, what's best for students, what's best for teachers, is also best for the community. And if you're not doing things well, you're, you're conflicting the two. So like a strong school district is good for the community. It builds value, not just property values, but it builds value to the people that are, the children being educated.
Thanks, Pete.
If you were the candidate selected to fill the vacant West seat, what are the five goals that you would have as a school board member?
So the five goals would, in theory, I, so it's a short period of time, so I'm not sure if some of the issues that I'm interested would actually be impactful in that timeframe. So I'll give you five goals, and what might come up in that timeframe might change those goals, just, but one would be looking in, so we approved this, the most recent referendum passed, so how that's going to be planned and executed, how that's going to impact the, the community. I, I am a controller for a construction firm. I have a little bit of knowledge on schools being built. Our company did the dirt work for Burlington Middle School, so a little bit of work on how does that contract look, if there's a contract signed, what type of engagement with the G C, and their, how they're looking for subcontractors. So that would be part of it, part of it would be, another goal would be, again, the special education funding. I understand we're limited at a district level on those type of issues, but there's challenges. I think how school boards can maybe engage the state, and perhaps a different look is necessary for how special education is funded in this state. Just speaking with my kids, there's, the proportion of children that have required one-on-one help with paraprofessionals is something that wasn't the case thirty years ago. A very small number or change in that percentage can have a dramatic impact on the financial well-being of the district. So how you plan for those type of things, and perhaps how we engage the state on how to look at that type of thing, so, I think, I think is important, because that's a challenge that's not going away, and that's going to become a long-term issue. So that would be another issue. Another issue that's important to me is how the, how the community treats, how the school districts treats, just sports in general, opportunities for activities, sports activities, how those, how those are looked at, the opportunities for students and how that benefits things, like the school board meeting on Monday was talking about potential German clubs. I have kids involved in sports, nephews involved in sports, just how that, those extracurriculars, how much that can really build up and add to a school district. So was that number three? I wasn't counting. Yes.
It's good, it's good.
So that, I'm not sure I had it really on the spot, I'm trying to think of some other things, but one would be also just how the, how the, how the school board, how the school district measures data that we collect. So there were some questions asked at school board meetings, and I'm not sure if we, as a district, how well we do with all the data that's collected, how well that gets utilized, how much expertise we have, or how much resources the board has given the district to analyze and collect that data and how that could be used. So I know in my work, that's one of the challenges, is what do you do with all the data you collect, you know, reviewing jobs, reviewing how people are measuring their time, resource allocation, where do you see pinch points? We track data to help give us... We track data to help give us information to go against the gut checks. And that takes, that takes resources and it takes a concerted effort to do that. You can't just say, here, do this data analysis, but not provide somebody with that skillset to do that. That's four, I'm not sure if I have five.
You're good, you got farther than... It's hard to pick up on the spot, five goals, so.
Yeah.
You're great.
So you had mentioned like engaging the state. How would you propose engaging the state?
Well, I think first we would have to talk to our local representatives, our assemblymen and senators in the area and talk to them, get their ideas and how they see this challenge and see if it's even on their radar. To see, like, because they talk about state funding of education and they use very broad terms, but I think the devil's in the details. How much is the state legislature really looking at special education funding and the challenges that has in districts? And how disproportionate that is on districts depending on size and depending on the population? Like you could have a very small district that has a couple students come in and that could sway the resource necessary to meet that need. You know, we've had, we had school board meetings where somebody was trying to change which district their house was in, specifically for, because they felt they could have a better opportunity to have their child's needs met in this district versus other districts. That puts a strain on us, puts strains on, you know, neighboring districts. Sometimes we make choices that are not, there is no good choice. So perhaps talking to the state and starting a conversation, educating how much of a strain. And I'm not sure, I, I personally don't know how much of a strain it is. I'm sure Joe can, he could probably talk for days over his career, how much that has changed in education and how much of an impact that this has. And he could probably also talk about how the number of solutions probably hasn't changed in quite a few years. At least as far as I know from...
He'd talk to you all day about it.
Two minutes, just a second.
Okay.
Is there anything that we haven't covered that you want us to know?
No, I mean, accounting background, but I, I have a vested interest as a, you know, as my children in the district, families in the district, but also just as a community in general, how important the school district is to a community.
Pete, your, your wife is a teacher?
She's a teacher, she's in Eagle primary area. She teaches middle school and in the summer school. She, for the last couple of years, she's also taught in Longo. She teaches the culinary class in summer school.
Dale likes those classes.
Yes. So she enjoys it, she thinks it's a lot of fun. Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy Merry Christmas to your family.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
We're taking a five-minute break. Lights on. Okay, we're coming back and Bertie, you wanna make a comment?
I would like to thank the eleven applicants. It's been an extremely tough, emotional time, the last six, seven weeks with what's happened. The community stepped up. I, I thought the, the emotions were, were, were high for a while and it was, it was, it was, it was good though. Community stepped up, I couldn't be prouder. Anybody else?
Agreed.
Yeah, it, it takes a lot to step up and want to volunteer and serve your community and give your time. So thank you to everybody that came and volunteered to do that, to help, help, number one, the community heal and help with the donation of your time and bettering of our school districts, are the most important things we have.
What we heard over and over were people coming in and just saying they wanted to help any way they can, like fulfill the time and the gap and talking about Vito and helping out, like his vision for the school. So much appreciated and I think that's because of Vito is why we had so many applicants for this seat. So thank you to the community and to the applicants.
Okay, moving forward, what the board is gonna do, we are gonna have a discussion on our candidates. We're gonna pick the top three, everybody's gonna pick the top three of the pool candidates. We had eleven candidates. And then from there, from that pool, we're gonna come down to finalists and then the board will vote on those two.
Have you noticed that you, our taco, you're just voting a lot of your tacos?
We're gonna, we're gonna write them down and then we'll, we'll count them up from there. Joe, did you wanna count them?
I have each board member listed here for minutes purposes. And if people would just, if you have them, whenever you have them, give me some time, but please give me the names and then I will write it down and...
We're gonna write names, only give you the names?
And then I can, however you've sorted it, you just vocalize that to me. I can write those down and then we'll have discussion after, the board should have discussion after.
The discussion after we give names or after the names are counted or discussion? Do you want, why we, or does it not matter?
If you feel comfortable talking about whether your top three, you can share that or just like any other vote, you can give your, you can give your vote and that's how it is.
So I just want to clarify, we're writing it down and we're giving it to you?
No, no.
Or we're giving it out?
However you've sorted it, if Dale wants to go around the horn here and just say Eric, and I'll write them down, I'll keep the note and then I can refresh the board then after everybody's had a turn.
Eric, would you like to start?
I'll go first. These three that I'm gonna pick came prepared. I think that they align with the community's values. And yeah, like the same good forward to the, the top three. That would be Emily Lewin, Christine Youngth, and Jason Bennett.
So three candidates I selected, I think they come, they came very prepared. I think they understand, you know, what the role of the school board is and also the superintendent. I feel like they have a, have a pretty good vision for what they want to see in this district. And I selected Jason Bennett, Christine Youngth, and Emily Lewin.
I actually have to concur with the first two, they were very well-prepared. They understand the role and mostly they just wanna, they wanna serve our community. I, I think all the candidates were wonderful. I think they all bring something to the table. But my top three are Jason Bennett, Christine Youngth, and Emily Lewin.
All right. I, my top three, I think, I'm gonna echo whatever else is saying, came very well-prepared. I think, also I think they have, should I say the thick skin? That you're gonna need for this position because no matter what decision you make, somebody's always not gonna be happy. So I thought that came out in their interview. And I think they have good vision, solid background. So my top three are Jason Bennett, Richard Hacker, and Emily Lewin.
Top three, Aaron Hackett, Jason Bennett, Christine Youngth. Thank you.
Top three, very similar thoughts to what everyone else is saying, the, seeing the excitement, the energy and passion to want to commit yourself to sometimes done a very thankful job. Is I had Christine Youngth, Emily Lewin, and Jason Bennett.
Okay, I also echo that there were so many good candidates and again, it's, it sometimes can be a thankless job and really appreciate everyone who put their time and effort into coming out here. My top three are Kristen Youngth, Jason Bennett, and I'm gonna mess up the last name, sorry, but Peter Zukalas?
Zukalas.
Zukalas, sorry.
Okay, give me one minute and I'll go through the rest.
Thank you again, everyone. It was really hard to pick. You don't ever know what you're gonna get and it was, it was really cool to meet eleven members of the community that share passions that we have.
It's not always easy to put yourself out there and volunteer, plus they have to sit there with all of us around here and it's gotta be a really tough position.
That is tough.
It was really awesome, so when I came here to meet with Joe this morning, I walked in, can't get in the door. The four years here. It was the best way to start a day ever, it was, it was awesome.
High school players?
Yeah, they were really good.
That's a pretty crazy part of our board meetings, just having the kids here.
Oh my God.
Oh yeah.
And having, I think that, don't get me wrong, I love the high school kids, but these little kids are just knocking it out of the park.
Pretty good.
Unbelievable, yeah.
Yeah, pretty, pretty talented.
And Joe, when, when, when would the, the selected person start?
We would do the seating in January for the selected position. So numerically, just so the board knows, Jason, he had three first-choice number ones, if you will. One, one number two. Yep, and two number threes. Christine had two number ones, three number twos, and one number three. Emily had one number one, two number twos. I'm sorry, one number one, one number two, three number threes. Aaron had one vote. Richard had one number two vote. And Peter had one number three vote.
Joe, I think there was a little misunderstanding. Like when I gave you the, my candidates, I don't know, the board is thinking the same thing. I didn't give you as like a one, two, and three. I just gave you my top three candidates.
I just gave you top three as well, top three.
So then the candidates, thank you very much, the remaining candidates that we have are Jason, Christine, Emily, Aaron, Richard, and Peter, all had a vote.
Who had the most?
How many did Jason, Christine, and Emily have?
Like if you count up all the votes?
Everything total.
Yes.
Jason had six, six votes, Christine had six votes, Emily had six votes. So those would be the, the, of the vote getters, those were the top three, all with six votes nominations from the board. Aaron had one, Richard had one, and Peter had one. So those would then drop out of consideration.
So just as a, just as a point of order then, can we change our process to do a top two and then a top one? Because we have three that tied.
We have three, so...
That makes sense.
So now we vote for a top two?
Yeah, so we go top two from the, the three left. Does that make sense or does anybody disagree?
Nope. I'm good with that.
Agreed.
Okay.
Just give me one second to set up the sheet.
Is it in order this time?
Not in order, just we'll go its whole votes. Whatever you guys are writing.
Eric?
Okay, so this, obviously we have a lot of good candidates. These top three are all very solid individuals. I think that as one stands out to me, when somebody applies for a job, we have eleven people apply for a job, and once somebody comes in and says, no, maybe you shouldn't pick me, essentially you should pick this other person, right? They're echoing, just how good of a person this other person is. So that said, I'm gonna go with Emily Lewin and Christine Youngth.
Jake?
I'm gonna go with, please one second. Okay, thank you. I'll go with Jason Bennett and Christine Youngth.
I think it's really hard to make a decision like this based off of a very brief interview and some emails that we got to read. I think that all three of the top candidates are wonderful. I think they care, I think they wanna be here for the right reasons to help our district. But my top two are Christine and Emily.
My top two are Jason Bennett and Emily, Emily Lewin.
My top two, Jason Bennett and, I'm trying to remember if that glasses aren't really... Christine Youngth.
My top two are Christine Youngth. That's the one. And Jason Bennett.
Okay, my top two are Jason Bennett and Christine Youngth.
Would you like me to tally as I did before?
Yes.
The top two.
Top. Christine had six votes, Jason had five votes, Emily had three votes. So the top two then for consideration would be Christine and Jason.
Can you talk in microphone, please, Joe?
Emily had three votes, Jason had five votes, Christine had six votes.
Thank you. My good, would you would like to start this off, please, and vote for one of the top two? Christine Youngth.
Christine Youngth.
Jason Bennett. Jason Bennett.
Christine Youngth.
Jason Bennett.
I'll go with Jason Bennett.
Okay, Jason has four votes. And Christine has three.
Congratulations, Mr. Bennett, and we'll be in touch with you shortly. And that concludes our meeting. Can I get a motion to end? Make a motion and end the meeting.
A second.
The motion and second, Crosby, roll up, please.
Boy.
Yes.
Carolyn, yes, Greg?
Here.
Dale?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.